All right, small crowd this evening, but thank you for being here on the cold night. It is Monday afternoon at 15:00, time is 7:03 PM. We will call this special meeting in South Oklahoma City Council to order with a roll call. Please, please.
Counseler Long, here. Counselor Collins?
Here.
Counselor Hires?
Here.
Counselor Bliss, absent. We have a forum.
Despite Counselor Bliss's absence, we still have a forum, so we'll go ahead with the meeting and move to item 30. Now, that's our public comments section. Comments will be accepted from the public concerned topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. And accumulated totals of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. Prevarance will be given to South Oklahoma City citizens. When in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by the speaker during this public comment period. Is there anyone who'd like to make any comments at this time?
Yes. Hi, guys.
Counselor Long, how are you?
Fine, thank you. It's cold. So I am the spokesperson, I guess, for our group on Academy Street that had the concerns about the Airbnb slash bed breakfast slash tourist court slash tourist home, all of that stuff. Um, I'm not, I don't know, I'm embarrassed to say that I haven't been to these meetings before, and I'm not exactly sure, um, how things are done, but I got a copy of the unapproved minutes from last meeting, and under our comments section, it didn't list any of our discussions. There was nothing there about the, uh, topic that I'm up here about now. Is that normal to happen like that, or what happened to that, our discussion?
I haven't taken a look at the unapproved minutes yet.
Where would you like to see them?
Ma'am, those are unapproved, like I said, for the meeting. Those are not final, but I will say that your comment, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, was, um, suggested that you discuss that during the actual agenda item. So that's why it wouldn't be posted in that public comment. Just because you spoke during the agenda item.
Actually, we spoke during the public comments.
Yeah, you started, and then I think you were...
But we didn't know we were on the agenda. That little description on number 14, it's been, I don't know anything about land descriptions or anything, and so I didn't understand that that was at our street there. So, um, would discussion be put there, ma'am, or what happened to all of our discussion? Is what I'm wondering.
I'm at a bit of a loss because I arrived, I think, in the middle of that item, if I don't overcorrect it. So I'll need others to step in and...
We don't usually include every comment from the public as part of the minutes. It usually just says when we take action, and no action, or who made the motions.
Okay.
It doesn't say, "Susie said this, Nancy said this, Bubba Joe said this."
Yeah, it's not a transcription. Okay, we're not talking about the public comments.
Yeah, I wouldn't be expecting a transcription, but a summation of some kind would seem like...
I think what she's referring to is that she initially got a core public comment in regards to the Airbnb, but it was directed to her to speak during the agenda item, because that's not supposed to be talked about, I guess, during the public comments, because it's only...
It's on the agenda.
So then, the discussion that we had, there wouldn't be a summation of any kind, or...
During the regular agenda item.
It won't be, it won't be like Counselor Long said. It won't be, you know, basically, word for word what was discussed.
No, no, I wasn't expecting...
It's just simply in regards to the agenda...
Something like maybe, um, members of the public came forward and objected to this item or something. Um, I thought maybe it would have some kind of a, we had a lengthy talk, a very long talk, and it would seem like there should be some kind of mention here that we objected to that item. And then, I don't understand, you have to help me understand, um, where, uh, where would it be? What are we doing about it? I mean, it looks like it's just gone. Is that true? Is it just wiped out? No action was taken? Does that mean it's killed or tabled or...
This is the difficult part, is we were straying from the comments section intent. If you want to make comments on that topic, that's okay, but we can't...
How do I do this part that I'm asking?
Just have, have, have a say. Uh, make any comments you'd like, but we can't answer any particular questions on the, on the topic. Otherwise, it would be possibly in violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, I guess I understand that, but I don't understand, when I did make the discussion, there's no record of the discussion, and if I comment here at public comments again, and those are not listened to, then, excuse me, how are we going to resolve this?
We do have the recording of the meeting.
Sure, I know that, but that's not what I'm asking. I can comment it all again. I'll comment it all again.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, we're a bit limited in what action or response we can give you during the comments section, but...
Well, you didn't give me much action during the agenda item. So how am I supposed to get it? All I know is that it was, it's voted to dismiss. Does that mean it's gone? Does that mean that it's over? That you're not going to take any further action? Or does that mean it's tabled?
I believe it simply died for a lack of a motion. So unless the council were to choose to bring it back. And then, again, I walked in at the, basically, that item, so I'll need someone to verify that for me, but...
All right, so I'm just gonna, just let you know, um, we put an ad in the paper that said, "Protect our children. Presently, our city council is considering changes to zoning codes that will allow Airbnb businesses to operate in residential areas next to schools. Also called bed and breakfasts, these businesses expose our children to possible dangers from tourists and transients who use these facilities. We want to protect children from sexual predators or others who could prey on schoolchildren in close proximity to the Airbnb. We are opposed to Airbnb, i.e. bed and breakfast, tourist code, tourist court, tourist home, tourist court, within 300 feet of a school. We urge you to help us by contacting your city council in support of our children." We've only run that in two papers so far, but we will continue. Um, the first issue from the house at 314 Academy Street, that house was remodeled without a building permit. It has been open for over a year in violation of the zoning codes. The community does, has not had a chance to protest that zone change, because it's never, it's just been ignored, totally ignored. We know that multiple notices went out to the owner of that Airbnb, telling them that they were in violation of the zoning codes. It was referred to the district attorney, and there was no action taken. So thus, a few months later, then the house two houses down opened an Airbnb, and so it's operating as well in violation of zoning codes. Zoning codes were written to protect our citizens. You are enforcing those codes to protect us. Is that not correct? Is it not your job to enforce those codes to protect our citizens? Zoning codes were written for that reason. And so, because of small-town politics, or relationships, or whatever reason, those bed and breakfasts are operating in violation of zoning codes. What are we going to do about it? Who, who is enforcing the law? Who enforces the law? Whenever we see a law that we don't like, we just don't do it? Whenever we see a law that affects a friend of ours, we just don't do it? Is that how we operate here? Do the fines still continue? $200 a day fines was a mentioned fine that, um, should have been still continuing, I guess, on the first one? And has the second one been notified that they're in violation of zoning codes as well? And have an opportunity to file for rezoning? They need to file for rezoning. Where are we in the process? I don't have a clue what we're doing. It seems to me like you're hoping that we're going to go away. But Mr. Johnson can tell you that I am not going to go away. This is too important. I guess that's all I have to say. Will I get on the agenda next time, or do I just continue in public comments?
I will make note that you've made a comment in regards to this issue.
Okay.
Public comment. It will be official at that point in time, because you did present it.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing no one else, move to item number four, which is discussion, uh, which is a discussion at the moment, regarding the adoption of ordinance number 1271-2018, establishing regulations for retail marijuana establishments, commercial marijuana growth, dispensaries wholesale marijuana facilities, marijuana storage facilities, and any and all other establishments related to the purchase, sale, or consumption and use of marijuana, inspections permitting establishing regulations for growing marijuana for personal use, and public nuisance related to the same. Man, that was a verbose agenda item. Counselor Collins?
Well, to put that in a nutshell, I've looked at several ordinances and codes for different municipalities. Um, I'm in no way trying to, uh, hinder or go against the laws of state Oklahoma now. And in that regard, um, I said, I think you guys have all seen some that have come across the pike. Chief, do you have anything you want to address?
Uh, it's not, this is a new thing for everybody, and I did not realize that there was, uh, an involvement in the fire service as much as there is. Learned more than I ever thought I would about it the last couple of weeks. Uh, but there is, uh, a lot of, a lot of cities out there that are putting ordinances in because of the nuisance of the odor, uh, the fire protection system, the ventilation systems, all that has to do with us. Uh, the two-hour firewall ratings that have to be put in, uh, and they're, and they're on different levels. I mean, different cities, some ban any kind of growing inside the city, some allow it in certain zoning, whether it's agriculture or industrial. So there's just a tremendous amount, all kinds of different, uh, uh, ordinances that are out there, but the, the meeting of the International Fire Code is going to be one of the things I think it's going to require. And again, it's kind of, I didn't realize that we were involved in, in the fire service to that extent. I always just figured it was more of a, you know, council thing, but we do have to do inspections on them, make sure that they meet those requirements. And because of that, we checked into it, looked at all of them, and we, I believe I've sent every one of you, uh, Mr. Johnson included all of you guys, uh, copies of different ordinances that you can mimic off, overlook at, and see which one's going to best suit our needs. And I think that it's best that we get this thing coming out of the gate to, uh, to help this process along. Uh, it's, it's people are wanting to know what they can do, and I'm, I'm trying to meet that request, and what they want to do is, is best I can. Uh, but I feel as though the council is going to have to take some action as far as the ordinance or whatever, to be able to, uh, make things happen for those folks that are applying for licenses, occupation license, those type of things. We got to make sure it's safe, and we got to make sure that it's, uh, it's going in the right direction that basically you guys want it to go.
Counselors, any questions?
Chief, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I appreciate what you guys do at the fire station.
Oh, that's, that's all right. Like I said, I was kind of, took off guard with it, so, uh, I just think that it's going to be a lot easier to, I'm not saying be restrictive, because I don't think we need to be so restricted that keeps people from doing what they have a right to do. I think we just need to, you know, it just, it's a lot easier to loosen up than it is to tighten it up after everything's been loosened up so far. My opinion.
Thank you very much.
Any comments? Did anybody in the audience? Counselor?
Chief?
Yes, sir.
I mean, obviously, you can be almost as restrictive as you want. Uh, probably within certain pretty extreme limits, I guess. But what happens if the city, I mean, just in your opinion, if we literally do nothing? As a total hypothetical, I'll make that clear. We just sack it.
I think it would probably be thrown more on my back and the building code's back to enforce the building codes and fire codes.
Well, you'd be doing that anyway, right?
Sure, and I mean, that's, you know, we just have to, you know, but at the same time, we, if we see something that has a life safety issue in it that should be addressed by ordinance, then we could bring that to you and, and request it be passed. Uh, that's, that's where we're at. If you do nothing, then the state law allows them to do it. It's up to each city to decide where, how, and when, and what, because there's four different stages, I believe, of this, this process, and, uh, from growing to retail. And, you know, it's a, it's a common thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to happen, and we have to, we have to decide the fairest and best way to deal with it for the public, as well as the people that are, that are wanting to get into that business. I think it needs to be fair on both sides.
So in hypothetically, right now, if we literally made no moves whatsoever, you could have anything, pretty close to anything, going next to a park, a church, a school.
Take care.
Anything...
There is a, I believe there's a thousand-foot, the state law has a thousand-foot from a school, but if you don't do anything, and then my, my belief on this thing is, is that, you know, I mean, they're handling CO2, fertilizers, uh, butane, different things to process the marijuana, and with that being there, that's, you know, I wouldn't, I'd be real hesitant to let somebody put a business in that's going to be extracting and, and doing the things to the marijuana that's going to cause, you know, next to a, right next to another building that's going to be extremely detrimental, something like that.
That sounds to me like almost an industrial operation, and it would need, even if this council did no action, to be put in that kind of zone. And so, we've already got, I think, some limitations in place already.
Right.
The question really becomes, do we want to add more? Because a retail dispensary, of course, is going to be in commercial, and...
Like C1 or C2, what have you guys put that?
Right, and then, and then if, without action from this body, it'd be up to Mr. Johnson and staff and self to move the car to figure, you know, figure out where that would end up being kind of classified. But if you all want to do that force, add other restrictions, you all will need to come to, you know, some kind of decision proceeding on what you want to do there. Otherwise, it'll just be handled as anything else, with the overlay of those thousand-foot limitations and a view of the thing from state law.
Now, you said you currently have people who've already requested inspection?
Yes.
And have, do you have a timeline in which you have to inspect?
No, uh, basically, and I've, I've visited quite candidly with them, and I've told them, I, you know, this is new to everybody, and we're trying to learn the best and fairest way for everyone, and, uh, I want to ask what, what do we need to do? What do we need to do there? And looking at what's happening in Broken Arrow, a guy invested a lot of money, and then he turns right around, they, they pass the ordinance that now he's already invested his money, and so I, you know, I just, I advise them, you know, wait and see what happens, and, and kind of play it by ear. If the council, you know, doesn't do anything here soon, then, you know, I'm not going to tell these people that they just shouldn't do it. I mean, they're wanting to move on with their business, and so I couldn't just say, "Well, you've still got to wait. We don't have anything to address it," because we, in fact, we do.
And that's my point, is in fact, we do. It just may not be what you all want in terms of this particular commercial activity.
Right. I have a question. So the International Fire Code, does it specifically speak to these types of businesses?
Yes, and it, the, also, life safety, uh, chapter one discusses it quite a bit.
So...
Between, between, go by.
If a business were to come in, and, you know, and there's a lot of discussion on the state level, you know, how they're already fitting into existing codes. So if a business were to come in, and where you go to get the medical marijuana, I don't, I don't, you know, don't lean into, like a dispensary, is that, like, that's where you go to get it? So then it becomes, in the code, it would become a pharmacy. They're saying, they're saying that's where you're going to get medicine, medical marijuana is from the pharmacy.
Some look at it as a pharmacy, some look at it as a liquor store. It's been no more or less...
And you, and you even heard me a moment ago say retail. I mean, that's pretty all far as I can tell.
Yeah, I guess there's a difference between pharmacy and, and liquor store zoning-wise, but...
Sure. But I think, and I don't know, so I'm, again, kind of out here on an island, I think those that are looking at it as a retail, or as a liquor store, are cities that have come in and said, "That's where it goes. It goes in that classification." But if the city doesn't come in and say it goes in that classification, then the intent of the state law potentially is that it's a pharmacy. It should be, it should be coded like a pharmacy. So, play with me on this scenario. So if that were to happen, and they were to come in, and they were filed, to file for a license to open a business, open a pharmacy, they would have to meet, because the type of pharmacy they're opening, they would then have to meet the International Fire Safety Standards for that type of business, correct?
Same as any other business, yes.
Okay. The whole, I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that there's not like a loophole through, around the International Fire Code.
I don't think there's a loophole in getting through that, because when it boils down to it, it's going to be an authority-having jurisdiction thing, and we will be able to...
I don't want there to get loopholes, though. I'm not trying to give anybody idea, bro. I'm just saying, I want to make sure that while we're, you know, haven't put together a, an ordinance, a standalone ordinance on our own, what the laws we have in place, there's not a loophole around it, your, this topic that you're talking about.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty satisfied and firm that the, the International Fire Code, both the International Building Code are going to be, uh, enforceable on any business that comes into town.
Any other questions or comments?
Either of you want to ask me a couple of questions?
Oh, no, let me come up there.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm, I'm confused. I mean, like, your business is, is retail business?
My current business is a retail business, but I, you know, I'm not a dispensary. I don't have those plans yet until I know what's going on.
So is that like a pharmacy?
No, they consider it retail. 788 considers it retail, a dispensary. And, and what it says, this is interesting, because, um, SQ 788 creates, creates a three-tiered commercial system of growers, processors, and dispensaries. Growers sell to processors, processors prepare, uh, consumable forms, marijuana, um, so it says that 788 grants municipalities the right to enact measures that increase the amount of marijuana that medical marijuana license holders may possess. Um, it also expressly addresses municipal zoning regulations of retail marijuana establishments. Uh, 788 is silent as to municipal zoning regulation of growers and processors. So that is kind of key, because I see what you're saying. We want to be, we want people to be safe. We don't want people to be growing, processing, and blowing things up, or having fires, and, and, you know, so that's interesting. That, to me, that makes it seem like you can act on that. You can do what you want with these fire codes and, uh, enforce different things. Um, we get 788 to silence, so you're not going against the law of what people voted in.
I do want to interject that a fire code is going to be enforceable by any standard of understanding.
Right, fire code, yes. I just mean if you want to, like you were discussing, if you, he, he goes in and is like, "Well, we need to do this, that." I, you know, I don't know...
Your business is strictly retail, finished product.
Yes, oh, yeah. I'm not, would not be a grower or processor now, no.
Growing and processing is what we're, what we're after.
There's, right now, I think, uh, it is, uh, growing and processing that I've, that I've heard from, if you want to do growing. Uh, but there, like she said, there's the dispensary, there's retail, there's also storage and packaging. Uh, there's, again, what I, only thing I've learned about it is, is there's, uh, there's about as many safety codes involved as there is in, uh, let me stand that, I guess, but the, my safety codes is there is security issues, uh, you know, just like a pharmacy, they have to lock it down and make sure that people don't get in. One thing the pharmacy has is they're FDA-regulated, uh, they have federal government that regulates who can be back there, who can do what. Uh, then some cities look this as being like a liquor store, where it would be, uh, its contents could be, uh, volatile. Uh, I think once it makes this store, and I don't know, you may know more about it than I do, can you retails it, right? I mean, I'm volatile, this stuff is already in the store, uh, but I just know that in the processing, that's one of the, the problem, the fire safety issue, so.
Yeah, I agree. In retail, you don't, I don't, you don't really, you're not seeing that. It's the whole processing part where the explosions could potentially, you know, happen.
And I, I don't know about all the nuisance and the ventilation as far as retail, if that would be an issue. Uh, I don't want to speak in with, and maybe that it was just looking at growing, how we talked about ventilation, because she's, she's already taken into it, got the charcoal filters, uh, she's pricing things to see where she's going to go with it.
That could be a big issue, especially among the growers, so you're gonna, there's going to be a strong odor. Retail, how I would do it if I went in that direction, it would be totally smell-proof containment. But, you know, processing, growing, it, it could be a big issue and bother some people, you know?
We're, we're going to a class next month, three of us are going to do a, a class just specifically on this, to try to understand more about it. Uh, and again, uh, this kind of, when we went to the Old Mill Conference, and I sat through a class, I, I thought it was for cops, but it's, it's not, it's for you guys and fire chiefs and such.
Start my May for a second, since we've talked about the zoning code so much. So, I1, industrial 1, you know, we're permitting operations like, um, electric equipment manufacturing, or paper products manufacturing, or engraving plant, um, experimental laboratories, um, dry cleaning, manufacturing. And you go to I2, and it just keeps getting bigger, oil field manufacturing, uh, you go to I3, you got gypsum plants and acid manufacturing and gas manufacturing, bulk storage of gasoline and butane and propane. And so, we have these zoning districts that I'm going to assume are regulating things far more dangerous than any kind of manufacturing medicinal cannabis products. And so, if we're not able to address that with our existing code with some tweaks, as far as zoning regulations go, then we've got issues. Uh, I mentioned at the last council meeting, um, and you made a fair comment, but we're always looking for sources of revenue, and I think if we're going to have a section in the code dedicated to medicinal cannabis, then it's the licensing, and it's the fees along those lines. Uh, some tweaks to the zoning code, setback distances, uh, specific to these operations might be necessary, but, um, the zoning code is designed with the flexibility to address a broad spectrum of anything that wants to come to our community, invest, manufacture, sell, retail, whatever it is. And so, um, to pick this one thing out and act like we can't handle it is insulting.
How's it insulting?
Because we can handle it.
All of it insulting, but it might be...
We, we review, we review a random, any applicant comes in and they tell us what they want to do, we start reviewing the code, and we apply it as...
Ultimately, finding that's insulting may probably have a different...
Well, I would like to, I would like to see that my comments of the last time, last meeting were appreciated. I don't know if you were at that meeting or not, and so, that's my point.
So is your...
We keep talking about this.
Is retail, uh, medical marijuana, is it cash business also?
It is, it will have to be, until, you know, I've heard talk of someone opening a bank in Oklahoma City, but if it is, yes, it is medical marijuana, then it's, it's all cash business, so...
What kind of security steps would your particular business have?
If, if I was going to transition to a dispensary, I would have a security system, cameras, uh, inside and outside. It, um, there's... There's been some that have, it says that you cannot change or restrict zoning to inhibit a retail facility from opening, but it doesn't say anything in 788 about growing or processing, what you can do with the zoning. I know that, like, Washington State, it's a tricky thing, you should look into that zoning, because they, I think, I can't, it was agriculture, and then they switched it to industrial, and they're facing a lot of problems. Or it could be vice versa. That's something that you can look at and see.
That's one of the very few areas where I think there's enough ambiguity, whether we, you know, you deal with growing, do we need an agricultural zoning, or do we not?
I mean, that's one area where I think things can get a little fuzzy.
Yeah, I can't remember where I saw that.
Greenhouses, nurseries, there's C-1, and there's commercial, that's where they're permitted right now.
Is that how you grow this stuff?
In a greenhouse.
Greenhouse or a nursery, or other plants.
Indoor, it all has to be grown indoors, still outdoor going.
Have you, have you seen any regulations?
They're finding it in the ditches or something.
Well, that's industrial hemp. It's, there is a law where people can grow industrial hemp, that you have to partner with the university, which is completely different than actual...
No, I mean, I just know that the stupid story is not here. I'm not a cultivator. But it will grow and they feed it.
Oh yeah, it will. Oklahoma's just not allowing that yet, for medical marijuana to be grown outdoors.
Okay, is that something I missed in 788, they don't let you grow it in a field?
If you were a grower, if you have a license, you have to grow it indoors. But there's no canopy limit, which means it can go as big or as small as it want to.
The August 1st, they revised that takeaway, that it has to be grown indoors.
Is it for patients? Patients can grow indoors or outdoors?
Right, they've actually changed it, anybody can grow it outdoors now.
Oh.
Well, I'm wondering, that's okay, I feel like it in the growing field.
Their latest revision. It has for the last few years, right?
That's what I'm trying to, I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
Yeah, that's been for a long time.
Maggie, can I ask you a question?
Uh, yes sir, go ahead. Have you read any ordinances with licenses and fees from municipalities?
I have. I mentioned Okema last time, and they're just overreaching, that they're trying to charge patients $2,000 to grow in their own home, per year.
What about the other sections, like the retail and the processing?
There are some cities, maybe it's Broken Arrow, that were in charge $2,500, the state fee is $2,500 to be a grower, a dispensary, or a processor. And I think they wanted to add that same fee. And then I have seen, what city was it, added even a tax, I think 3.1% on top of the state tax, which is 7%, but I think they're going to see a lawsuit. That's what I mean, I just, I don't know. I think in the ordinance, there's, I think things may be set in place to protect everyone, but I think it just needs to go with 788 and not overreach. I don't know how, with the taxing, with making city, you know, applications, with, I don't know if they will, if the judge will consider that overreaching or not, you know, I just, I don't know.
I doubt it, I really doubt. I mean, just to be honest, I mean, it's just a pretty standard issue kind of regulation for any marijuana to selling widgets out of the store. I mean, they all have different types of requirements. Mr. Chief?
The thing I'm hearing a lot of is basically on nuisances. You're going to hear people from apartment buildings that are right next to someone, and I think I'm correct, because there are like 12 plants they can have in a home.
Yeah, six dogs, six seedlings.
Okay, whatever it is, and I don't know, I guess they said there's a pretty good rule over this stuff, and a lot of the ordinances, I'm saying not a lot, but a few of the ordinances that I've seen are requiring permission slips from the landlord, you can't grow it in their home, you can't grow it in a rented home without permission from the landlord, different things like that to kind of curb that. So this stuff's going to come up. I think this is something that we're going to have to address as time goes on. You know, I don't feel that, you know, right now, the way it is...
Let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Why? I mean, I'm serious, why?
Why, because I think we're going to address you about it.
We don't have to have a fee.
I can't keep the guy next door from, I can't stand the smell of his marijuana, so I think that's going to come to this court.
This will be as used for growth?
Probably the growth, I would think. They say the growth is the, where it smells, I don't know.
I don't either.
I've never messed with stuff, I don't either believe it, I'm sure.
We should all reason.
It has a weed to it.
You take a trip.
Yeah.
Well, there is someone in the north of town who has a grow facility, so that might really be a good thing to do, is take a trip up there and see.
So, do like the plants stink, or is it like the process?
The plants stink.
To like make the soil?
The plants, the flower, that they, it's what emits the smell, as it's growing.
So just having a bunch of...
Concentrated.
Yeah, well, and then when it's processed, it's going to smell, it's just...
So if I were a landlord, and you moved into my brand new home that I just built, and you were bringing 27 stinky plants, we would probably, that would be a long-term impact on much of the brand new carpet I just put in my house, and that's probably...
We can only have six plants.
Well, I'm just, you know, being cautious, you know, that would be why the landlords are concerned about that, and not wanting to end the property that they own.
But then a landlord would put it off that police.
Right, which is what...
Private kind of situation, I would think, but...
The issue that has been brought to me, and you've probably got phone calls about it too, is just from a city council perspective, limiting how many in what area, because for example, just Main Street, hypothetically, you had eight retail vacancies beside each other, and you want eight of these identical retail establishments right next to each other. And that's something that potentially we would discuss about, as how we, how our community looks, and if we want to control that in any way. That is my asking, I don't have an answer yet, but that's something that we'll think about.
I think landlords can say whether or not they're going to allow that, I think that's in 788, they can check it. I don't know, I'd have to read it, but I think that's in there.
Whatever point you already brings up, like, why do we have to do something? Or if we do, it doesn't, I mean, I can tell there's going to be, most reactions are going to be either some kind of really, you know, throwback kind of situations like Okema did, or I think El City maybe, and they give these radiuses and everything, and to where it's basically impossible to do it in the city, or they charge a lot, and to where it's impractical to do it in city limits, and then there'll be other people that want, a total hands-off, all the halos, pretty kind of situation. It's completely contrary to how we handle everything else, but, you know.
El City just made it, basically just...
Yeah.
Made it to where you had to be outside the city limit.
That's basically what they did. If I were, I'm pretty sure it's El City.
So far from a school, and so far from this.
That would be counterproductive for income for our citizens.
Well, Yukon is facing all city too, and they tried to, in a roundabout way, did the same thing. Couldn't be so, maybe from a church, a neighborhood, a, I can't remember what else.
Because 788 only says a school, correct?
It only says a school, yeah.
But then I think they're using, either Oregon or Washington takes it a step further and says, like a daycare, a school, or something. And I think they're using that language, that's why they put, they're being able to use that language.
Yeah, I think the best thing to do is just get popped to 788 and just, that's what I have to do, I just have to keep reading it, re-reading it, and just, I don't know, all along those lines, I don't know.
You can pretty well mimic it, or you can make it tougher if you'd like, and you can't get any looser, but, I mean, I think that...
You can, you can increase, that's what it does say. You can increase, there's so much your patient can have, but that's what it does, it specifically says in 788, that you can't, you can increase the amount that they can have in their possession of medical marijuana, which is interesting. That's what I'm saying, it's just really good to read it, and there's a lot in there to pay attention to.
That's contrary to about every other state law they've ever written, but alright.
Yeah, it says, it says that the city can not decrease it, but they can increase it in the law.
That's where the Oklahoma Board of Health is running into a lot of their legal issues with, Oklahoma is for health, Chris.
Thank you.
You true? I'm just treating it like a really neat academic problem, so I'm sorry, even if everybody doubts. Any other comments? Then we will move along to item number five, which is discussion of possible action to purchase a car rollout and truck. Mr. Armstrong, I see you over there, you must be speaking tonight for the solid waste department.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Congratulations, yeah.
Thank you, it's appreciated. So, tonight, we're here to talk about the budgeted item, the small, or the waste hauler. I provided the three quotes. There's another option that some of my salesmen were telling me about, was the non-CDL, Class B CDL requirement, so they took some off the chassis, put it under the weight, so we don't have to have a CDL to operate the vehicle. And I just want to talk about the CNG for a second. I kind of want to move away from the CNG for this vehicle, just because the cost for the engine upgrade is $69,000. We have to farm out, like, all the work we do to it, and the cost for labor at those shops are $110 an hour. And majority of the time, when we have to send it, we have to tow it, so that's enough $350 from worrying, towing, to get it to that facility to get it fixed. There's a couple of them in these packets that was provided. The first one was the Freightliner, which came in, the price is $110.5. That's a good truck, and then there's other, another can work, that's $122, that we're looking at, but it depends on which direction you guys want to go.
What's your opinion, Mike?
The fleet that we have now is Freightliner, so I think it'd be better and more effective if we stay with Freightliner. So when I order fuel filters, oil filters, air filters, I'm calling one vendor to get the whole fleet's parts and keep it under one roof, to where I'm not going to six or seven places to pick up these parts.
And then the Freightliner is the one that's $110.5?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's cheaper, consistent with the rest of the fleet, and that's the same contract price at least, or something?
Yes, yes.
The same contract price, because that was my next question.
Yes, if you look at...
I'll be honest, I tried to look at this stuff today, and it was kind of like trying to read a manual in Spanish.
Right, no, I got you, I got you.
For those of us who don't...
Well, if you look at the quote that I got for $110.5 on there?
Yes.
That's the first one, I believe. If you look at the bid series, it's SW 035T, and that's actually a state contract.
Statewide contract, awesome, that makes me happy, thank you.
So, but now that's the non-CDL, correct?
Yes, sir. And then if you flip behind it, it's the exact same truck, but with the engine upgrade for the CNG, it's $60, or $69,402, so it'll go from $110 to $172. So there's a pretty big increase on these vehicles, just to get the upgrade.
There's not that much savings if you're going to get it.
Not right now, and not at $69,000. I mean, it's one thing to kick up, you know, ten...
Provide live gas for $60,000.
Right. And then when diesel is, you know, four and a quarter, or whatever that was, I mean, that was one thing.
Well, and like, with this vehicle being diesel, we can keep it in shop, we can do more to it, we can get it out faster. Usually, we have like a four-day turnaround when we send it to Premier and Skokie, we can go get the part, put it in, and put it back on the road and service the community like we're supposed to, instead of, you know, employees, crew in comp time, or delaying everything, so keep us on track a little bit.
How long will it take to get it?
To get the truck?
You come back tomorrow and say, "I get a truck."
I'm not sure, that's one question I didn't get, like, that far, because whenever you start giving these guys hints on like, you're going to buy the truck, or like, how long, they all just want to come at you and stay, stay on top of you. So I told them, "No, we're going to come and talk to you guys first, and then go from there."
That's like a bunch of used car salesmen.
Yeah, yeah. Usually it's pretty quick, though, these small rollouts, they're single axles, so they're already, like, the non-CNG is going to weigh less, so, but with the hoist and stuff like that, we can still carry loads, as we're supposed to, so...
Now, we require our drivers to have a CDL, correct?
If the truck requires a CDL, yes. Like, there's a Class A and Class B, if they drive a Class A truck, which is a semi and a trailer, the combination makes it an A, they have to have it. If it's a B, which is $26,001 pound, but they're above.
Right, but this is replacing a truck, correct?
Yes, this will actually be, because right now, we got a 1995 International, and the transmission's going out, and it's going to cost more to fix it than actually keep it going.
And so that, to drive that truck, it's required to have a CDL?
Yes.
And then just to clarify, Chris, this was budgeted in this year's budget, right?
Yeah, not the non-CDL, but just for the waste haul, for the truck.
To buy the truck, we have the $110,000 budgeted.
Yes, we have a $183,000.
$183,000, alright.
So we've downgraded to avoid the CDL requirement, even though the current truck requires a CDL?
Right, well, like, that truck kind of replacement isn't in the loop, like, we don't use it unless it's a backup, like, say, number eight goes down, then we use that truck. But the thing we have now is, a lot of guys, like, don't have a CDL. So like, whenever, we don't have a person to operate that truck, we have to stay later. So if we have one that's a non-CDL, I could put a, a efficient employee in there, a careful employee.
High to flexibility.
Yes.
Okay. Now, since you've heard the explanation from Mr. Armstrong, do you all have a preference? So, entertain the motion to express it.
I make a motion to buy the Freightliner for $110,500.
The motion is Freightliner, right?
Yes.
Is this the, the non-CNG, or the CNG?
The non, the non for $110.5.
Okay.
Freightliner, we've got a motion in second, council hires and tomes. Are there any other final comments? Roll call please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long, yes? Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir. Item number six is a discussion and possible action to hire Adam Richmond with 552 Part 9 Labor in the Recreation Department.
Pretty standard, Jackie's not here, and this is one that's coming in after last month. Was it part nine of the Recreation Department?
Mr. Richmond's in the crowd, so is he more disappointed, you're going to have to do it to his face, but we... And a motion, who are...
What was the statement, right, I'm sorry?
It's 552.
Oh, 552, okay, sorry.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Combs, roll call please, clerk.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long, yes? Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 10-15-18, calling for an election to elect a Ward 3 counselor, Ward 4 counselor, and mayor.
Did we get a revised version in the packet, and all square, past practice and those kinds of things, and the law, charter?
Yes.
Okay.
The dates have been changed, corresponding with the charter.
Alright, I think that was the... Did we do it a three-day period?
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
I will make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Council Hires? Any other questions or comments, curiosity about this particular process? Something we have to do in order to have the election this February, or the signup period in the second week of December, technically first, and then of course the election. Clerk Oberol.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number eight, is a discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1268-2018, rezoning the property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of West Chalk Top Street and South 7 and 11, from single family, R-1 to neighborhood and commercial district, C-1. And the big description is something y'all are just going to have to do without me reading, it's in the package. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilman. So yeah, this is action item, because that's the last meeting. I mentioned that the proposed use is a Dollar General. I don't know, were you here for that item, Andy? Yes, sir. Nothing's changed since then, we, they've kind of jumped the gun on you guys, and they're confident, so they've submitted actual engineering plans, so I don't know if that's good or bad.
Don't get used to just sharing, do not get used to that.
We can require it, and yeah, yeah, don't get used to it, but this is the site plan for their proposal. site plan for their proposal. You know, we've, we've done an initial review over it, and so far, we just had a few comments.
Probably helps their cause rather than hurts it, but, uh, don't get used to it, yeah.
Go back to the big picture.
There's that, and then there's that.
Right there, before you go into the valley down Seminole?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can tell. I hope they don't have the tow ball on there.
No, they've been filling that place up since I was born.
Yeah.
You can see the fill right there.
Yeah.
It's outlined.
I'm, I'm not, I mean, from toddler up practically, drive by there, "Hey, look, it's no longer a big of a valley."
And it's past the zoning?
What was that?
It's past zoning?
Right.
Oh, planning and zoning, yes.
Yes. I make a motion to approve. Motion in the second for approval, any other questions, comments, reactions, concerns?
Isn't it supposed to be complete, do you mean?
I mean, they're obviously ready to go, so I anticipate, this might be a pretty good term, I anticipate it very soon.
It's not the first one they've built, I hear.
Right. They might just build themselves.
And they are not particularly complex or intricate facilities, so.
Did it magically show up one day?
Yeah.
Why McDonald's?
No, I put... Yes, sir. Um, I live north of town, and, uh, I frequent the dollar store by log, uh, by log store. Their parking lot was a nightmare, like, it was full of sinkholes and potholes. Is there any kind of ordinance or anything that they have to abide by that they didn't go under, or something? Because it tore my truck all the hell, the only reason why.
They are...
That one that you're talking about is not in the city.
Not in the city.
It's not too new.
We can't really... And then, and it's actually unusual, most of the time, it's one of the actual complaints and drives I have of this corporation, that they locate about 50 yards outside the limits so that they have a competitive advantage and basically screw the community, uh, if they're trying to attract cash from it. But, hey, we've got a motion in second, and I think it's probably worth approving. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You tell I. You love these people. Item number nine, is discussion and possible action to adopt ordinance number 1269-2018, rezoning the property located on the southeast corner of the intersection of East Shawnee Street and Logan Avenue, from single-family dwelling district R1 to two-family dwelling district R2, for the following real estate that is described in your agenda. That was shorter, I'm still not saying it. Go ahead.
So, this is, um, Sean Shepherd, J.P., S.D. Investments. At the last meeting, I discussed how this property had found itself on the abatement board, and they declared it dilapidated and ordered it demolished. The owner before Sean tried his hand, had it, and he got in over his head and choked. So Sean offered to buy it. He's already removed the structure that's on the property. Mr. Shepherd has a history of building duplexes and apartment complexes in our community, and I think he does a good job, he's easy to work with, and I think this will be a good change to that neighborhood. Something else we discussed at the last meeting is a lot of the adjacent uses aren't zoned properly. I think we're all aware of that problem. So, you know, it's across the street from a duplex, down the road from triflexes, catty corner from a nursing home, so those non-conformers, when they probably put the planning code in place in the seventies, they were all over there.
That would be my assumption, most of those.
Except for what I've said that I know of, but, but, uh, that most of them were there long before the code was implemented.
Yep. Uh, this is a, a comment for later, but upon development, uh, when we get into that particular space, try to preserve as much room as you possibly can on the north side, because one of the things that we wanted to do with Shawnee is actually make it, you know, a real road, because we also had a problem in the 1970s of trudin' everything.
Yes, it's very narrow, the street.
Yeah. Foresight wasn't exactly our forte in the 1970s. And, uh, good for, you'd almost think it was back in the course of buggy days, as narrow as it is, but, what is it, 20-foot surface, 21? I mean, it's, it's...
At the most.
Yeah.
20.
20, yeah, it's narrow.
Mm-hmm. And there's open ditches on both sides.
Yeah, that's the worst part, yeah. Fire catchers on both sides. And I don't remember the exact estimate, but it was definitely something we considered for the 2013 bond, that we, we just didn't, uh, we didn't, that's just for whatever reason it didn't make sense.
Well, because at the expense, I can only assume with the...
I think it was fairly high.
The open ditches, they carried a lot of water, and if we were gonna put that underground, that would be it.
And we were also looking to avoid right-of-way acquisitions as much as possible.
It would be necessary.
And that, that was gonna be one that we recognized right off the top, it's just gonna be inherently, like, we need impeding...
Of every problem.
Of everything, and half a dozen structures are gonna have to go, and I mean, it's gonna be a real mess when it gets tackled, but, yeah. Alright, counselors, that is an action item, is, uh, their motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, and Counselor Combs, is there a second?
Second.
And Counselor Long? I said Counselor Bree, sort of a thing.
That's okay, can call ours.
Any other comments? Roll call please.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 10 is discussion and possible action to withdraw and/or utilize the Ally Bank certificate of deposit with Edward Jones in the approximate amount of $190,000 on or after, its upcoming date of maturity on October 29, 2018. Mr. Johnson?
So, we, um, we're just in the process of acquiring property, particularly for our concept for the bike trails north of town. The last time we had an agenda item similar to this, that is where the funds were dedicated, was for the acquisition of those pro, of those properties adjacent to our existing 65 acreage north of town, that we intend to use as bike trails. In order to ease access, we're still interested in a number, interested in a number of properties in and around the 65 acreage. And the money that we withdrew last time isn't gonna be sufficient to cover all those costs. And so this is another CD that is becoming mature in the near future, and if we don't make an action on it, it's gonna be reinvested. The next possible CD to mature, I believe, is December 24, 2018, and that is $53,000. We actually have it in this fine print here. And then after that, we don't have a CD mature until October 2019, which are two. And then after that, it's, it's 2020. So, um, this is our last chance at any significant sum of money for this fiscal year, and so rather than reinvestment, back into a fund that, I believe it says 1.6% right there, I can't tell for sure, it's the second one down, I believe? Or it's the first one?
1.6.
Is that what it says?
Yeah.
So, um, you know, when the taxpayers paid their taxes and we, um, scheduled to spend them, they didn't pay them with the intent of us putting them in an investment account. And so, um, I think most taxpayers expect services, capital improvements, and things of that nature, and I think most of us can be in agreement that we need improvements in our capital improvements and services, so.
Well, this is your chance. A motion to approve from Counselor Combs, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Hires? Any other questions or comments?
What, do you have any color?
I'm a little concerned we keep on drawing down our reserves. We've never, ever, since I've been here, had to lay off any employees, and if something happens to Walmart or Racers, that's gonna, it's gonna be hard to replace, so, need to keep that in mind.
Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
How much was the last one that you said that, uh...
The last one that they voted to approve?
Yes.
$240.
$240, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We've been making the case for three or four years now that we need to put some of those, trying to find ways to do that. And, um, I don't know how much interest we have, what you're saying out there, I have no clue about where you're going, but we'll, we'll figure that out in either conversation. Ms. Dyson?
Did anyone suggest that maybe more money be spent on our streets?
It has been, I believe, suggested. Yes, ma'am.
That's a good statement, Nancy.
I believe I have a room, but...
It's been, it's at a record, a record high. And we've got a record $11 million worth of true construction taking place in this community right now, out of most that's ever been done simultaneously. We're making headway, even if occasionally some people may want to argue, it's still not enough, but, uh, it's a record.
But the intent claim is that they take all this money, and they can go with the town outside of the city.
To cover our costs, you know, because we would more likely lose all our property ownership, which would...
And I don't really know what the, why the arbitrary mentions of outside the city limits really come in. I mean, we'll, we'll, it's ours, we'll annex it whenever we please. That's my longer plan, is we are gonna have another annexation using the property that we own to bring in additional property.
Ms. Dyson?
It might be, uh, that people mention that, because there are people that live outside the city limits who are being affected by city purchases, but who are not allowed to vote in city elections, and so they are being affected without any kind of voting representation.
If it's because their property still currently lies out the, lies outside the city limits, we would invite them to go ahead and annex if they would want to have that kind of representation. They, they, feel free to do so at any time. Clerk, give us a roll call.
Counselor Murray?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
No.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, sir, you're up one more time, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Item number 11 is discussion and possible action to purchase streetlights for the Bluff Avenue Rehabilitation Project.
So, yes, speaking of our street projects, this one is just about to finish up, um, and in addition that we're going to improve is the lighting of the streetlight. We've got the sidewalk that's gonna be continuous from Downing to First Street, and this is gonna light the southern half from Chop Top from First Street. And these are decorative lights, I can show you a little image of what those look like. They're a fluted pole, so it'll be consistent with the rest of our community. Thank you, and I can tell you're looking at me, because I'm the one that's looking at you, I appreciate that. Yes, I understand. Yes, um, the uniformity is attractive, and the light itself is attractive. It's, I believe, 17 feet high. We're looking to purchase 19 of them for a total of $49,995.
So, where is that document? Where can we get that?
I don't know.
My document is at page 31.
But I also have additional quotes. So, lighting, submitted one, for $53,800. I can't see it, 84,95, for the same 19, same grand, same lights. And then, Irving Lighting, Art Manship, requested a quote, quote from them on my behalf, and they came in at $54,800, so.
So these are the exact same quote, the exact same style?
Yep.
Light?
It's 19.
And these, this is not something that you can purchase off the state contract?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so you did look into it to see if it is available to be purchased off the state contract for a really big discount?
No. But we did quote three times. Yes, we got three quotes.
I feel at one point we had talked about moving lights up to the block.
We did, yep, did discuss that. The, uh, I mean, I'm gonna be brutally honest, you wanna say that we had intent to do some lighting in the Main Street area, and, and nothing ever seemed to be enough. Whenever we tried to kind of sit through the meetings on how to make that happen, they, they wanted to take what was around a $600,000 project and turn it into a $1.1 million project, and, uh, so finally just closed the books on that and said, "We'll, we'll leave them there until we can figure out, you know, what, until people understand what our limitations are, and we'll just buy $50,000 apparently worth of lights on one block."
And we still have the opportunity, by the way, to actually move those lights, uh, to the trail.
Yep.
Uh, once the time comes.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, so, we, we still have the opportunity to do that rotation. In fact, isn't that, now that you're thinking about it, isn't that what we had last decided on, was go ahead and do this without the rotation, and do the rotation onto the trail?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this doesn't negate the Main Street lighting purchases?
No, no, not at all.
No.
Not at all. But we delayed it because it was just, uh, I mean, we couldn't get input without them wanting to make more lights and double the lights and go to different places, and it was just like, go back, if we can get that work, we'll figure it out later. Yeah, we changed out of...
And then we did take that money and reallocate and bought something else with it?
I think we did.
When we just kind of, when it stalled, we bought something else.
I can't even remember what we...
That was like two years ago, it was a long time ago.
Yeah, it's been a bit.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if, and when we do replace the lights on Main Street, we'll reuse, repurpose those lights some way, some fashion, some way.
Most of the stuff downtown is probably movable.
Yeah, the difference there is those lights, um, they disperse the light just everywhere, they're open, and these are downward facing, and so, you know, the east side of Bluff is all residential, and they don't want their front house to have lights on the whole time, so they chose to have those downward facing lights, where they can put it on the street and sidewalk.
Handling lighting.
And getting brighter. And they are LED lights, so they're gonna be very energy efficient.
That's one reason we want to move downtown more than anything, is just the energy efficiency. They don't turn out as often, but, uh... That's a discussion for another time, but it does not negate the possibility at all.
I, I liked it, and I think we need to put lights up there, obviously. I just want to make sure that we're not diverting money, which is a bad word, that's all anybody will, it's, look, catch on you now, but I want to make sure that we're doing Main Street.
Yeah, that's right.
I guess I want it to be adamantly clear that we're not moving away from Main Street and putting it up on block, that's still...
No, that's a modern part of it.
And couldn't go to Main Street, yeah.
So this is funded out of bond money?
In a bond. It was part of the Bluff Street project, it was part of the concept from the very beginning for, put her off the bluff a little, add the sidewalk a little way down, um, you know, redesign, put in, straighten it out some, add a curb and gutter, um, and this, and this lighting. And then probably some fencing here and there, we haven't really got to that point, have we?
No, that's in the Rosco construction.
Oh, was that, okay, was it in the original, my apologies.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, because we were talking about the stock. My apologies, yeah, it is in there, you're right, you're right.
Because my question, normally, we don't purchase lights, and normally TPWA does all the lights, so if you didn't purchase lights, TPA would put them in for free.
Right.
But it was in the bond, and it was planned in the bond, to do it in the bond, and the money is available within the bond.
Tropical Public Works would put up creosote poles with, you know, basically, we're gonna do kicks with, uh, high-pressure sodium, you know, paint off, and it'd buzz like a printing office when you're walking sidewalk. Not that I've spent enough time there.
We don't know that to be absolutely true.
To their credit, they were helpful in this process. Um, you know, our city staff and Tocal Public Works staff are the ones that laid the conduit for the connection of the power. They set all the pole bases, and that was all done internally. We didn't contract that out with Rosco. They're a street constructor, and, um, and we would have been upcharged significantly to ask them to do this part of the project. And so, we've saved a significant amount of money using our city staff as labors, and TPWA helped significantly as well. When the discussion came up about who's going to pay for the electric bill on these lights, um, that's why I call them streetlights, and if we all keep calling them streetlights, then they're going to have to pay for it.
Pilot program, payment in bill taxes.
But TPWA is... they blessed this style of light, that it's...
Yes, I mean, they've been in conversation, I don't know if they even care about the style of the light. As long as the street is receiving light from the light, then, I think they're happy with it, and they're willing to pay.
And since it's a street light, and TPWA will pay the bill for the street light, wouldn't they be happy that it's an LED and it's going to save the city money?
Absolutely. I would hope so.
Sure, yeah. And you're right, councillor slash trustee, if I can't just assume anything, I should not...
Take the Tocal Public Works authority.
I don't assume it does.
You guys got the holes.
Make our... So, we're all considering... Clerk, could you please make a, uh, put the councillor slash trustee's comments in the record office?
Which vendor would be your...
Yes, ma'am.
Have you looked at solar, or is that not a possibility?
Forty-nine... Not in that particular area. We've looked at a couple of places, and, uh, now...
If you could be given this, you could just...
I had that, I didn't give you the other quote.
Hey, can I have just a touch of order here, real quick, so I don't know that Bluff was going to be a good fit for the lighting standard, you need more density, and there's some, you know, issues with the amount of something like you get up there and that kind of thing, houses on one side and the other, and, uh, so it's not always feasible, but, uh... Okay, now, you all go ahead. What was it?
Maybe it's down to which one I recommend.
Oh, okay.
I'm making a motion that we could help purchase the lights from BA Electric.
Okay. Broken Arrow Electric.
Broken Arrow Electric, uh, is the recommended vendor. I'll be making notes on both.
999508.
Thank you, Councilor Tombs. Clerk, did you get that? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
I'm not too excited there. Councilor Long?
I thought... Hires was going to go for it.
Clerk, give us a roll call, please.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Tombs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 12 is, uh...